I'd like to call the September 10, 2015 meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, nice to see you again. Would you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 First order of business are the council minutes of the meetings of August 10 and August 13, 2015. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the minutes of August 10 and August 13, 2015.
Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 We have no matters of special privilege today, no public hearings. That brings us to our next agenda item, which are reports. We have, first, the monthly financial statements. Those have been distributed. Any thing you want to point out?
Spending remains on track. Any deviations from month-to-month deal with when bills come due at this point, but nothing out of line or extraordinary to report. I'm still cautiously optimistic about the bed tax and meal revenue being above showing an increase again in the past month.
And any questions, comments? Not monthly department operating reports? Again, anything in particular to point out?
I'd just like to take a moment for a couple of things a little off the report, if I may. October 2 is the opportunity for employee service awards for staff to be noticed. And the long tenure of staff here in Williamsburg is one of our assets and strengths. There's a policy requirement that I identify anybody past 35 years at the department head level, but I'd just like to mention the 20-plus-year employees because I feel that's a dedication of their time to this community. At 20 years this year is Donna Douglas, at 25 Greg Riley, and Peter Wallantish. 30 years Jackie Herman, and 40 years this year Dan Clayman. He's going to hide and say you play our public works director.
He was only 15 when he started.
I want to take a moment, and Mayor, you also asked me if I found the break in the action in this relatively quiet meeting. The mayor received this letter from Senator Warner dated August 27. Dear Mayor Hallman, I am pleased to extend my warmest congratulations to the city of Williamsburg upon receiving the Voice of the People Award for transformation in the recreation and wellness category from the National Research Center Incorporated. This honor recognizes that your commitment to the wellness of your city's residents has made a lasting impact on the community. Individuals, community groups, and local government departments are renewing their commitment to recreation and wellness initiatives by renovating parks and recreation facilities, prioritizing bike lanes, and installing additional sidewalks. This dedication is a tribute to the pride you take in your community. You are to be commended for your dedication and hard work. Please accept my best wishes for continued success and progress in the years to come. Sincerely, Mark R. Warner, United States Senator.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, comments on department operating reports?
I'd like to make one comment. I noticed under the police item that Chief Slogi has been elected to be the 2015-2016 President of the Association, the Police Association of Virginia, and I think that's a wonderful honor for him and for the city.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief. You coordinated the local host committee for the annual meeting here in Williamsburg, and everything I heard from other police chiefs is it was a spectacular event, so thank you for all of that as well. And congratulations. Okay, next report of city manager reports. We have three. The first is the possible legislative issues for the 2016 General Assembly.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Before you today for discussion and feedback are possible issues for the city's 2016 legislative agenda. The list that's been provided for discussion today carries forward some issues that you've seen in the past, and are also some preliminary issues that's been identified by the Virginia Municipal League. So I'm going to spend a few minutes going over some of the possible issues. We've organized them into four categories, and then I'll spend a few minutes talking about process moving forward. So first, looking at statewide priorities. We've identified several issues for consideration as we develop our agenda. The first is looking at redistricting reform, and this is an issue that the council has already taken a formal position on in the past. ETC tourism promotion funding, also one of continual interest and concern to the city. New to our issues list is Virginia preschool initiative study, looking at this issue statewide, opportunities for public-private partnerships, looking at opportunities to expand the preschool program for all children in Virginia, also looking at review of income eligibility in order to qualify for the preschool program. These are all issues that are being part of that study statewide. Looking at sharing economy and regulations and taxation as it relates to the sharing economy, those issues around services like Uber, Lyft, Airbnb. How do we share information so we can properly regulate them? How do we, how's the taxation issues and questions answered around them? These are issues of importance statewide. Also FOIA exemption limitations, there are two issues that are being discussed right now. The first looks at allowing closed sessions for personnel issues or matters, and the second issue looks at working papers and correspondence provisions and limitations for the mayor and the chief executive of the community. So these are issues under that FOIA limitation that we're continuing to watch. Under the category of transportation priorities, we identify four at the moment, first being I-64 widening from Newport News to Richmond. As we heard from Mayor Hallman on Monday, we had the groundbreaking for Phase 1. We want to continue that momentum with Phase 2 and Phase 3 in the future. Also looking at VDOT urban system funding, this is looking to reinstate that level of funding as well. We've talked some about HB2 prioritization as it looks at transportation and transit funding in the region, and so this will be something we'll carefully want to monitor as they continue to refine that process, maybe look at encouraging a little bit more flexibility as well as they continue to refine that process. And passenger rail service improvements on the peninsula, this is one that you've seen before, but it continues to be of utmost importance to the city of Williamsburg. Going into the third category, this is looks at Virginia sales tax policies. We've identified three various issues there. First, the first two bullets look at online sales tax collection and lodging tax on sales and Internet sales. These are ongoing issues that still need resolution. And then the issue of e-poll tax reform always seems to come up as part of the General Assembly session, so putting a clear statement out there regarding revenue reform that's neutral to the localities as part of that. And then the last category really looks at that relationship between state government and local government as we fund specific programs. And you see, we've got quite a few listed here, everything from K-12 education to police 599 funding, funding for regional jails, for services programs, behavioral health programs, as well as constitutional officers. After today's discussion, we'll work on a more formal draft to present and provide to the council at your October meeting for consideration and feedback. Prior to the October meeting, we'll be working with several of our regional partners to see if there are any issues that they would love the council to consider, including on the city's agenda. Those regional partners will include Colonial Williamsburg, Wayman Mary, the Williamsburg-James City County School System, as well as the Chamber and Tourism Alliance. At the October meeting, if council is comfortable with what the draft has been presented and decides to take action on that agenda, what we'll do is then after it's been approved, we'll send it to our city delegation so they have a copy of it, but we'll also start the process of trying to schedule a meeting between the city council and our delegation. We usually target the early December timeframe, so it gives an opportunity to have that meeting before the January session starts. If council is not ready to adopt in October, what we'll do is we'll continue to work on the draft and make revisions and refinements and bring it back to you at the November meeting for final consideration. So that is my presentation this afternoon on the possible issues for 2016. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Jerry. Any comments, questions, additions?
I have a question. Ms. Miller, where do we stand on the concept of aid to the Commonwealth?
And this actually might be a question for Mr. Sarah. My understanding is that it went away and it came back, and it's gone away again.
Okay. I didn't know how much it wove into those other questions about state funding, those 599.
So as of right now, I'm not aware that it's going to come up again as an issue. What we may find out is as the session goes on that it does come up again, and what we can do is then send our thoughts and feelings directly to our senators and delegate on that issue.
Okay. The other question, recently we had to adjust our policies because the state determined that surviving spouses of veterans killed in, I don't know if it's killed in combat or killed in service, are exempt from local property taxes within certain parameters, depending upon the value of the home. And I just wonder if the council has any appetite, not that it would necessarily go anywhere, but asking our local delegation to pursue in the General Assembly a similar exemption on state income tax for people who have suffered the same loss.
Well, it seems reasonable, and perhaps in that the state would like to share some of the burden of what it costs to, you know, give these discounts and taxes, so I think that's a good suggestion.
And if we could put it somehow in the whole unfunded mandate, there are not, this seems to happen a couple of times a year after the session, that the state has decided it would be nice to do something for people, and we get to pay for it. So they get all the credit and we get to pay for it. So I don't, but I don't know how to word that.
Is this an issue that Virginia Municipal League has looked at at all?
I know they have looked at it and whether they've taken a position on it as of yet.
We might want to communicate with them and find out sort of where they are, what their thinking has been that could help us think through this as well, that that might be useful.
The Virginia Municipal League's annual conference is the early part of October, and that's typically when they adopt their formal legislative agendas as well. So between now and our October meeting, we'll have a little bit more guidance on that issue.
Thanks. Anything else?
I'm interested to see what we can craft on sharing economy and regulations and taxation. I think it segues into a larger discussion about what we do locally to regulate taxes, which I think could use a second link. That's an evolving issue, and it's one that I want to be sure that we're on the right side.
Yeah, and there's a lot going on in a variety of think tanks about this, so I think it might be useful at some point to see if we could pull together, yeah, sort of a 10,000-foot view of here are the issues and what have you, and maybe we could ask staff to begin to look at that and at some point come back to us, because it's a fairly complex issue when you get down into the nitty-gritty, so it's going to be helpful to have some, here are some sort of larger points to think about, and then how you apply them in particular areas is probably important. But it's not going to go away, and it's going to get bigger.
And more complicated.
And more complicated, exactly.
Yeah, with tourism funding, you know, I know that in past we have, kind of, they ask for a co-op fund, and the premise of that is because, in our destination in particular, we spend a lot of tax dollars to promote for tourism, and how do we leverage that with what happens at the ETC? And so that's kind of a hope and a wish that even, that we'll get there. And so I wonder if we could ask the General Assembly to look into a dedicated funding formula for tourism, much like the $2 tax, you know? What we earn gets put back in, and so, but along the lines of what this destination, you know, York County, James City County, and the city, what we earn in tourism dollars and gets paid to the state as we get a 1% back, you know, in sales tax, you know, could we ask for some sort of formula that sends a dedicated source of revenue back for tourism promotion? I think maybe we can elaborate that.
And my guess is there are some other tourism destinations that would find that attractive as well. On the HB2 prioritization process, the state has completely changed the way it funds highways, and I've had conversations with Bob Crone from the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, and Kevin Page from the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, who are dealing with this, and suggested to them that might be useful for them to come up and do a work session for us, because both for us and for the public, there's a lot of change, and I'm not sure everybody's aware of that, so that might be useful to schedule that at some point in the future. I don't think it needs to be done before the legislative agenda goes forward, but I think everything they do about the way they're funding roads has changed, and so we need to be aware of that, and the public needs to be aware of that.
Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Ms. Miller, is it possible to get resources and background reading material on the Virginia preschool initiative?
Yes.
I know Governor Kane had a program he was promoting several years ago, and I'd just like to understand better how they overlap or compare and contrast.
Anything else? Okay, well, stay tuned, and we'll look for an update in October, Jerry. Thank you very much. Next city manager report is locally designated growth areas. This is proposed resolution 15-12. Mr. Nestor, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, for the lead-in to my presentation, although looking at my memo, I think the primary purpose of it is to teach you new acronyms. The HB2 legislation that has changed the way highway funding is taking place in the Commonwealth has three different project types: corridors of statewide significance, COSS, regional network and urban development areas, or UDAs. And they're three pots of money, and we, of course, want to make sure we're eligible for any pot of money that we have out there. UDAs a while back were required, then they were not required but optional, and we did not designate UDAs in our comprehensive plan. UDA is defined in the state code as an area designated by a locality that is appropriate for higher density development due to its proximity to transportation facilities, availability of a public or community water and sewer system, or a developed area, and to the extent feasible to be used for redevelopment or infill development. We have areas in our comprehensive plan that certainly fulfill these objectives, but to be eligible for the pot of money for UDAs, we need to designate those. The easiest way to designate those is for council to pass a resolution identifying locally designated growth areas, which is essentially a UDA. So what I've done is go through our comprehensive plan and designated four of those areas: the high street area, midtown, northeast triangle planning area, and quarter path at Williamsburg area. Now, just coincidentally, our major highway projects for the future are located in these locally designated growth areas. In Area 1, we have the Ironbound Road project. We have funding for the first section of that, but it will require further funding in the future. Area 2 includes any future improvements we would need to make to Monachello Avenue. Area 3 has the intersection improvement at bypass and Capital Landing Road. We don't have any proposed projects in Area 4 at this time, but the attached resolution will put council on record as stating and certifying that these four areas meet the requirements of the state law concerning urban development areas. This will be transmitted to OIPI, which is the Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment, and that's located in the office of the Secretary of Transportation, and there are some associated surveys that I need to fill out with this. But what this does, we don't have any projects in the hopper for this next year funding cycle, but I think it's a good idea to get these areas designated and in the hopper so in future years we can apply for funding for projects within these four areas.
Perfect. Thank you. Let me turn to council for any questions.
Ms. Nestor, are there any limitations to the number of areas that can be designated by a community as long as they fit the criteria?
No, there's no limitations. These are the four I felt most suited and that meet met our future transportation needs.
And I think the list is, this list of four is a good list. Is there, do one of these acronyms undertake an active role in evaluating the areas that have been designated and determine whether or not, from their perspective, it meets the criteria rather than just the city's perspective? I mean, is there any state overview or?
Well, yeah, the state has to review and accept this designation and the resolution. I've already run the resolution by the OIPI folks and gotten the okay from them that this resolution addresses the issues as in proper form. This lets us apply for a specific project in these areas. It doesn't mean we will get funding, because then there's a whole list of specific criteria that would need to be evaluated for any projects in applying for funding under UDA.
So have they then developed some form of checklist, a weighted scorecard like the?
Yeah, that's what the Hampton Roads TPO has been doing, and there's a whole list of things that are considered. Statewide, there's different weighting, the different criteria, depending on what area of the states you're in, so that's pretty much in place now.
And HB2 also assigns a more expansive and crucial role to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, so the whole mechanism is changing, and so this is a step to sort of meet those changes, but I have a feeling there's going to be some learning as we go in this process as well.
It seems a little simple or easy to manage on the surface, so that's why I wonder what's waiting underneath. I think that.
We will find out.
Are peer locales going through the same process, given the recent changes?
York County and James City County already have UDAs designated. We have not, so I guess we're catching up with them, but, you know, we'll all have them in place as this HB2 evaluation process comes online.
And so I appreciate the effort, and I think it's better to be proactive than reactive in as much as we can be. Why not designate all the roads in the city in some category, you know, put the whole city on a list? I mean, it may not be a need, but there may be an eventual need for some road improvements.
Well, when you look at urban, at the, what urban developments are, I think, I think it'd be more difficult, you know, you look at, say, all the residential areas off of Jamestown, where that's not really an urban development area, so I don't think they are eligible. You know, I've included the areas that I thought met the criteria, and we also, there are corridors of statewide significance, and we have, Route 60 is corridor statewide significance, and that also, you know, includes that bypass road, Capital Landing Road interchange there, so there are other categories that we could qualify for too.
Well, and talk about statewide significance, and maybe it's not statewide significance, but recently we talked about resurfacing of Gloucester Street, which is a public street, and then also, you know, needing to do some enhancements to Francis Street. Could that not be somehow designated in one of these areas?
I think it'd be difficult to show that the historic area meets the urban development area criteria, so I don't, I don't think that would be possible.
If we approve this, it doesn't preclude us at a future date of coming back with an additional?
No, it doesn't. We could come back with an additional next time we redo the comprehensive plan.
So we, is your thinking that the next time we do the comprehensive plan, we will make this an integral part of the comprehensive plan? So this is really an interim step?
This is an interim.
So we do that, because along the lines of those comments, I was thinking about the whole downtown area, you know, is certainly, probably meets the criteria of an urban development area. I don't know that we have any projects right now that would go there, but I could foresee at some point in the future that, hey, well, wait until the next comprehensive plan redo, or if need be, we could go in with an amendment to this.
Yeah, and we may find out as the state and the TPO move forward with this HB2 process, you know, there may be some opportunities for designating other areas based on the experience that we want to have, but this, I think, gets us going in the direction we need to go.
Right, and I'm, by no means, I mean, if anybody has a clear understanding of the road systems and how these projects work, I'm sure it's our planning director, Mr. Nestor, and so I'm not second guessing. I just didn't want to put ourselves in a situation where, gosh, we'd have to react and try to get something in, so, but thank you.
Well, and the first three categories that are identified are ones that clearly have the potential for us to want to be involved sooner rather than later in significant capital expense. Some of the other things, I mean, the resurfacing, or even whatever fixes we might do to Francis Street would be just a fraction of the cost of these, so.
I'd just point out also that it can be designated by resolution, which is a fairly time-responsive manner, but the weight of the decision is similar to a comp plan decision, where you're looking at the future land use and character of your community, and so when you're designating an area, you want to be sure, I believe that's where the planning director is pointing out, you want to be sure that that's matching that definition, because not only is it dealing with the state funding, but it also sets a tone for an area for future land use for the community, and you don't, you don't want to unduly guide the community towards a redevelopment of an area you don't want redeveloped, chasing a state transportation dollar.
Judy. Any other questions for Mr. Nestor? Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move the council to propose resolution 15-12.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Final city manager report is the Quarterback Club Special Event Permit Parking.
Council had forwarded an issue regarding a special event and pedestrian safety following tailgating in and around the Quarterback Club tailgate event. I've asked the police department to present a brief report showing a potential resolution of the issues following a meeting with Quarterback Club representatives by staff.
Andy, welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, council members.
In previous years, the city manager's office issued special event permits for the Quarterback Club for Harrison Avenue west of Richmond Road. And in that time, they would restrict parking for Harrison Avenue for the purpose of this area right in here for the Quarterback Club. They would do it by placing a barricade that was manned by one of the members of the Quarterback Club, and then they would control it through signage. At approximately the first quarter to the halftime, that area that was manned was then unmanned, and they would move the barricade. And what would happen is, is from the halftime to the end of the game, your pedestrian and vehicle traffic started to increase and thereby created a concern of pedestrian traffic that was in that area. And this occurred as a result of vehicles coming from Yates Drive and from the other part of Harrison Avenue, coming across trying to avoid the congestion that had occurred in other areas. What we found from years past by the Christmas parade and Grand Illumination, different ways we can control the traffic and make it safer for pedestrians and get the vehicles moved out of the area quickly. We met with the Quarterback Club and the city manager's office amended the special use permit based on staffing by the use of increased traffic management equipment managed by the city and personnel staffing of the Quarterback Club. And what we did was recommend that on Harrison Avenue, we would barricade off the area between Harrison Avenue and College Terrace extended, just like we had in the past, but that it would be manned by the Quarterback Club, not only until the end of the game, but until all of the traffic was clear. They would restrict the traffic coming into that area that was permitted to be in that area by the signage and what they had arranged this with. It would be also barricaded at the end of that area that they were using with a right turn only sign for the traffic coming out of the Harrison Avenue extended on the campus area, directing them over towards Bright Street. We would place a barricade at College Terrace at the intersection of Bright Street, preventing any traffic from the campus coming into College Terrace and over to Harrison Avenue. So all of the traffic essentially is being forwarded towards Bright Street. Bright Street would have a do not enter sign so that facing eastbound for the Richmond Road traffic, so they couldn't go westbound on Bright Street. Thereby, traffic would only exit Bright Street and not College, uh, Harrison Avenue. And essentially what happens is this area becomes somewhat congested. With congestion, the vehicles slow down, pedestrians are able to move safer, but it also starts to discourage people from taking that as a shortcut or as an alternate route trying to avoid other traffic. And then they start to just go the way that they are normally directed to go. And so you reduce the number of vehicles traveling through that area. The pedestrians are able to walk because the vehicles are essentially stopped. And as they enter from that, Richmond Road from that one point right there. And we will be monitoring that the first time so that we can amend it or change it based upon what we see at that time.
Terrific. Thanks, Andy.
I'd just like to point out that in a meeting with the Quarterback Club, they were very receptive to the concerns of the citizens in that area that council had received, and also they were receptive to the ideas of staff to help solve that problem.
Let me see if there are any questions or comments or discussion.
One hybrid comment question. Would there be value, or has there been conversation with the college about, I mean, assuming if people are coming out Yates or Gooch, well, Gooch is really going to be more tailgating people. But I would think that, is there value in communicating with the college about letting the campus residents know that during the periods of home football games, they should refrain from driving through this area? I mean, it's very good about setting all sorts of rules on car parking and access, and they may have a way of just getting that word out that will let people know beforehand so they're not even tempted to go that way, then they don't get frustrated and try to drive quickly through something because it had to wait.
We actually had a meeting earlier this week with the campus police staff, and I let them know about what was going on, and they were actually very happy because they had a problem themselves on New Crocs Drive with people taking the service road to, and that got filled up, creating a hazard as well. So they're going to be assisting us in this plan. And I will let them know.
And I think this is definitely an improvement. I hope it resolves all of the issues related to it because it just becomes dangerous when you have a lot of people gathering in the street. It's almost like when you open traffic on the Duke of Gloucester, or when people move from the Duke of Gloucester over to Francis, and they just assume that all the streets are close to traffic, and then all of a sudden a car comes through. People aren't as aware or attuned to the potential hazard of that, both the driver and the pedestrian. So I think this looks like a significant improvement.
I agree that this is a great step. And I think as we see how this works, the dialogue will continue to evolve. But my specific question is, so the number of tailgate spots between the two St. Bees buildings, between the church and the accessory building behind it, how, I guess it's in the middle of the block there.
Right here.
Right. How will those people exit?
Okay. Right here and right here are exit only.
Okay.
And they come right on to Bright Street.
Got you. So it's really one way in, one way out of that.
That's correct. Exactly. And that's already signed. That's, it's that way permanently.
Okay.
Well, and maybe a challenge to that is the angled parking within that parking because the right, as I look at it, the parking that's closer to the parish center actually exit onto Bright Street, but the parking closer to the sanctuary exits onto Harrison Avenue because of the angle of the parking. It's probably not that big of an issue. And I think it'll all work out because what I think you're doing is limiting the amount of inflows, kind of the cars that aren't part of the tailgate, who happen to find themselves in a bad spot and then try to exit too quickly. And so by making sure that Harrison remains blocked until the end of the game solves that issue. I guess the Harrison Avenue extension towards the Blue and Green Village or what used to be the fraternity houses, will that be blocked off as well because, as you know, people can come off of Dillard Street onto the little access road between the intermire fields and those dorms and come up Harrison Avenue.
Right, exactly. And that's what I was referring to. It won't be blocked at this end, and it will be blocked where they have to make a right turn towards Bright Street. But whenever we met with the campus police department, that's where they were talking about that service road you mentioned. They're going to be barricading that and staffing that area to keep vehicles from coming towards us.
What's the, how do we understand the science of not allowing people to exit down Gooch?
Go down towards Gooch?
Yeah, head in that direction. I assume that.
You don't have anything controlling them going out that way?
Okay. I thought maybe by the arrows, we were only allowing traffic to come in, but that's two-way traffic still.
Yeah. The one-way traffic is strictly in the city. On campus, we aren't regulating.
Okay.
That one little section of, I guess it's Harrison that runs in front of the alumni house is one way.
Yeah, I understand.
But it's just the arrows.
That's the experience of traffic exiting after the game is what the areas are. And so, so thank you for working with the Quarterback Club and the residents there. I think, you know, my, what I see happening in that area during home football games is kind of, you know, real excitement around college football and our local university. And I think that goes a long way to, you know, good relationships with our town and gown. It also goes, you know, far in helping to develop that economy that comes with having, you know, people in that area and that, you know, having a safe environment in that real congested area. So I like this.
One thought for the future is, it'd be interesting, maybe as an experiment, one game late in the season, to have Gooch be one-way back towards Yates. Now, that would require coordination from the college, but that would take all the pressure off of that corner and push it back towards, back through the College Terrace or out past the.
And I may need to be able to meet with the campus and discuss that. It'd be an opportune time while we're building construction on the stadium. They have something available to do.
And that, just a thought else, that the, as the stadium finishes its development, I think the college has plans to kind of flow the pedestrian traffic from the parking lot by the hall up Yates to Gooch and then to the college that way. And so we want to be mindful not to put too much traffic or divert traffic down that way that could bleed out in other ways. You may find that a bottleneck on Bright Street with the limited traffic and parking standing still may in effect create a one-way traffic pattern going the other way.
It'd take a couple of games to learn.
I always try to speed home.
It's a work in progress. Andy and Chief, thank you very much for this, and I know you work closely with the campus and campus police and have a good relationship. So I'm sure if anything comes up, you guys will figure it out. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next city attorney reports, I believe.
Nothing today.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Just, I'm sorry, I meant to bring this up with the city manager earlier, but I didn't. Back in two thousand ten, eleven, we had taken the substantial part of our cash reserves and put it into a different funding, a different savings account, investment pool. And at the time, it was, you know, one of the better vehicles available, and it may still be today. I just wonder if it is a time to revisit that fourteen million dollars that sits, you know, in that sweep account and, you know, put it out to the local banks. Again, the local banks, I think it's important, to see if there is an opportunity to.
You're smiling as if we've already had this discussion. Phil and I had that discussion earlier today. That's the smile. The bug in your office is working well.
Great minds always think alike.
So I just wanted to put it on the table, and I'm glad that you all are working in advance on my comments, but I just want to, I think it's time that we revisit that.
Yeah, and that would be, the investment committee would take a look at that and then make a recommendation to us. Any other new business? Thanks. If not, that brings us to our final agenda of the day. Open forum of time of anyone who wishes to address city council on any issue may do so. I have one speaker's card, Mr. Gary Shelley. Mr. Shelley, welcome.
Hi, I'm Gary Shelley. I live at two oh five Indian Springs Road. I wish to extend a warm welcome to Mr. Collins and his family. We always, Mr. Nester, can hear. I trust that Mr. Collins has already familiarized himself with our code of ethics and that he brings these principles with him. Of all the important leadership challenges that he will face in the coming years, none is more important than abiding by our core values and insisting that our other government officials, whether on staff or whether elected, abide by these principles also. Mistakes happen. Citizens understand that. When little mistakes do occur, and citizens call out for explanation, it is the duty of our government officials to respond. Officials who choose to not address a legitimate concern or repeatedly ignore their constituents' request for response deserve no place in our local government. We have rules of order and procedure. In order to ensure honesty, transparency, and trust, these rules must be followed. No one, regardless of position, is entitled to subvert this process in order to benefit either himself or his friends. When publicly discussing or debating an issue, full disclosure of all pertinent information is essential. Sadly, over the course of the past decade, there have been several tough issues that continue to be left unresolved simply because some of our government had chosen not to respond. Sometimes the offender has been a department head. Sometimes it has been the city manager, and often there has been you. Ignoring your constituents is not an acceptable response. Attacking your constituents when they step forward with concerns is not an acceptable response. And certainly, a gutless declaration that I have addressed these matters to the extent that I intend to without addressing them at all is not an acceptable response. As I stated earlier, mistakes happen. We all know that. But when they do happen, they need to be acknowledged. Apologies need to be extended. If it is responsible, you need to be held accountable. And then the issue is put behind us, and we move on. But not until then. And once again, wish to welcome Mr. Collins. Hopefully, he will be able to reestablish confidence in our local government by leading by example. And when mistakes happen, as they most assuredly will, hopefully he will have the strength of character to deal with them, not dodge them, regardless of how painful or embarrassing they may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. I have another speaker's card from Jacob Stahlmaker. Jacob, welcome very much. Jacob's, you the S.A.
Yes, so, yeah.
Community, yeah, why don't you tell us your position?
Sure, yeah, no problem. I just came today to formally introduce myself to everyone in the city council and the city administration. My name's Jacob Stahlmaker. I am the new Student Assembly Public Affairs Representative for the student body of William &amp; Mary, where the, we're the unique voice of the student body at William &amp; Mary. So I look forward to communicating with you all and continuing to have a great relationship that we've had in the past couple of years and hopefully keeping open, you know, lines of communication moving forward. And I also wanted to introduce my undersecretary for Williamsburg Affairs, Jimmy Zhang, who is probably going to be, is going to talk next, just a little bit about, you know, where we are, and I look forward to working with you all. So thank you so much.
Jacob, thank you very much for being here. Jimmy, welcome as well.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for calling me up here today to talk a little bit about Student Assembly, what it is, and what we need to do for this year. So my name is Jimmy Zhang. I'm a current senior at the college, majoring in government and aesthetic studies. I'll be the new undersecretary of Public Affairs at Williamsburg this year. I was recently appointed. And so in that capacity, I'll certainly be the William &amp; Mary Student Body liaison to the city council, as well as I'll be standing in for the Student Assembly president and the rest of the executive in that respect. So this year, the Student Assembly executive has certain, has three main goals that they would like to push forward. The first goal is obviously to present, promote student interest in Williamsburg Affairs and to get students more involved in the city council, basically to let them, let them know what you all are doing and certain initiatives that everyone's pushing for. The second main goal is student political participation. That's something really important that we'd like to work on more so this year because there's going to be a state and local election coming up later on throughout the academic year. So we're going to get students registered to vote and keep pushing for student political participation for both parties. And the third main thing is to continue to strengthen the balance between the college and the community, as Jacob previously mentioned. And so that's something we're really excited in getting involved in. And if you all have any initiatives or outreach events that you all would like to publicize to the student body in particular, you definitely can go through me. I'll be here at every city council meeting, hopefully taking notes, publicizing a few events and whatever's going on to the student body through the Student Assembly. And so, yeah, it's a pleasure to be here. I really hope that we'll get to know each other throughout the coming months and continue to work together in a really positive way. Thank you all so much.
Jimmy, thank you very much, and Jacob as well. And you know that we're here to work with you in any way we can, and I hope you'll feel free to be in touch with us, and we'll feel free to be in touch with you as needed. Marvin Collins and I had a very nice meeting last week with Johancy Whitaker, who is the president of the Student Assembly. We look forward to those meetings with him going on, and we also look forward to a joint meeting between city department heads and Johancy and his cabinet sometime in the near future. So again, welcome, and we look forward to seeing you at our meetings. Anyone else wish to address city council on any matter? If not, I believe we have something for closing session.
We do, Mr. Mayor. I move to go into closing.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one of Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personal matter per sub paragraph one concerning a personal complaint.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into closed session.